Just about seven o'clock here and all three Board of Selectmen members are on. So if you guys want to, uh, open the meeting and get started, we could do that.
Look who's there. Whoops.
I'll introduce a motion to open the meeting.
Mark Collin, I'm moving the meeting on. It will say, say Board of Selectmen at seven o'clock.
Is there a second, Josh?
Seconded. Josh Antherm, seconded.
All those say aye?
Aye, Mark Collin, aye.
Josh Antherm, aye?
Okay. On the new business, approve the Board of Selectmen's meeting minutes for December ninth, two thousand nineteen. The Board of Selectmen meeting for January ninth, two thousand twenty. Board of Selectmen meeting from January thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And the Board of Selectmen's meeting minutes from March ninth, two thousand twenty. Motion? Motion's been made, is there a second?
Uh, well, seconded, but, um, on our, our agenda, we have them as separate, separate line items, uh, separate motions. So maybe we should follow protocol and do that. Richie, what do you think?
Well, we, we just, I, I read them all into the record, so we approved all of them.
Some of them I can't vote on, Rich.
I'm sorry?
There's some of them, uh, this is Mark speaking, there's some of them I can't vote on because I wasn't a member of the board at the time.
Well, you vote on the ones, uh, I, you know, I.
Oh, why don't I read them, uh, very quickly individually? I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the meeting minutes from December nineteenth, twenty nineteen.
Second the motion. All those in favor say aye?
Josh Antherm, aye?
Yeah, okay.
Uh, I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the meeting minutes from January ninth, twenty twenty.
I'll second the motion, discussion. All those in my favor say aye?
Josh Antherm, aye?
Um, I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve minute, um, minute, uh, meeting minutes from January thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
Seconded.
Motion seconded, discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye, Mark Collin.
Josh Antherm, aye?
Richie Lombard, aye?
I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve meeting minutes from March nineteenth, two thousand twenty.
Seconded.
Motion seconded, discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Josh Antherm, aye?
Aye.
Mark Collin, aye.
Uh, we, go ahead, Josh, I want you to read the next point, B.
All right, uh, I move that the Board of Selectmen execute gift agreement pursuant to general law, chapter forty-four, paragraph fifty-three A, and accept a gift of fifty thousand dollars from the Nahat Preservation Trust to assist the town with evaluating development of the property located at East Point.
Is there a second?
Second, Mark Collin.
Okay, discussion?
Uh, so, so people know that, uh, this is a, uh, a gift agreement that's putting, being put in place so that if people choose to, uh, gift money to the town, towards, uh, issues related to East Point, uh, this is the, this is an avenue for those gifts to be made.
Okay.
The initial gift is fifty thousand dollars and, uh, but that hopefully will be added to.
Further discussion?
Uh, just one, um, Tony, is this a document that we can make public?
Yes.
I can't do that. Yes. I'd like to put it online so people could see it, please.
Okay.
Just so people know, there's a, you know, it will have our signatures, we each have a copy to sign and, uh, we'll get those signed and, um, up to Town Hall and scanned and posted.
We need to vote?
Yeah, we all, uh, uh, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Josh Antherm, aye?
Mark Collin, aye.
Richie Lombard, aye? You never spoke.
Okay, I got one here, Rich, um, um, pursuant, uh, let's see, alternative agenda, alternative agenda notice. I move that the Board of Selectmen pursuant to nine forty C M R twenty-nine point oh three, I move that the Board of Selectmen adopt W W W dot Nahat dot org as the official method of posting notices for meetings of public bodies in the town of Nahat.
Is there a second? Motion's been seconded, discussion?
Would you like me to talk a little bit on this?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, uh, the official method of posting meeting notice for the town of Nahat up until this point has been posting, you have to post it in two places, so we post one inside the Town Hall and one outside the Town Hall. Um, given that we, you know, the building is closed, we've been posting meetings on the community calendar. Uh, so it's more of a formality and, um, that the online version of the posting would count as one of those two places under the open meeting law. Uh, so you guys accepting the, the Board of Selectmen voting for this and accepting this in allows us to count that online posting plus the outside posting as our two required spots, uh, pursuant to the open meeting law. Is that, is that anything to add, Dan?
No, no, that, that's fine, we have to pick one, we can only have one official, uh, method, right? Um, it's either A or B in that regulation you just mentioned and, and the website, of course, as Tony mentioned, is one, but we can always post elsewhere as well. We can never post enough, to be honest with you, in terms of actually nailing something to a, uh, you know, a, a board or whatever, so, yeah, Tony's right on.
I think we'll continue to post the hard copies inside and outside the building. Uh, but we're, we're also going to be posting online going forward. I think it's something that people wanted to see anyways, so it's, you know, we're, we're kind of being forced into it with the coronavirus situation and the building being closed, but it's a good thing, uh, moving forward, so people who, people don't actually have to go to the Town Hall to see if a meeting is being posted or not. Or if they're, if a meeting is going to occur or not, they can go right onto the website and see what's coming up this week.
Yeah, I think that's a great, um, it's a great change, uh, you know, it's been by the current conditions, but, um, I know a lot of people have been looking forward to this, uh, change for quite some time, including me. Uh, so I don't have to drive up to Town Hall to see what the, the meeting, the upcoming meetings are, so I think it's a lot more convenient for most people to go onto the website and, and see the posted meeting, so.
I agree with you. Although, okay, uh, let's, um, any other, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Josh Antherm, aye?
Mark Collin, aye.
Richie Lombard, aye? Okay, next.
Uh, pursuant to Massachusetts Session Laws, chapter forty-five of the Acts of two thousand twenty, I move that the Board of Selectmen postpone the annual town elections from Saturday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty, to Saturday, June twentieth, two thousand twenty.
Mark Collin, sir.
Second, motion made and seconded, discussion?
I can speak to this, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like.
Sure, go ahead, Tony.
So legislation was adopted at the state level, allowing municipalities to postpone their elections until June thirtieth, given the coronavirus, uh, state of emergency. Uh, so we, um, spoke with a couple of other communities, spoke with, uh, Etta, who was our, who we hired to run the presidential primary. We landed on three options, the thirteenth, the twentieth, or the twenty-seventh. We tried to keep it to a Saturday so that at least it's somewhat normal and, um, decided on the twentieth. The candidates that are on the ballot are set. The poll, uh, the ballot questions are set, nothing can be added, nothing can be removed. Uh, the only thing that is linked to the date of the election that will move with it is the voter registration, which has to be ten days, ten days prior, Dan, shake your head yes, if I'm right, ten days prior.
Yeah, usually, it's usually twenty, but now it's ten.
Okay. Um, Dan, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, there is one major part of this temporary legislation, and that is that in addition to absentee voting, uh, which is, you know, a soldier or someone, uh, someone working abroad from Nahat can of course use, but they are now instituting what's called, uh, early, early voting by mail. So it's basically absentee voting for free, you don't need to read a reason other than I just don't want to risk going into the polling place. So you can apply to Carol Nelson, the temporary clerk, uh, for an application for early voting by mail, and you never have to come to Town Hall, you can mail in, you're literally mailing your vote, um, from right across the street if you wanted, so that's a, a significant provision of this particular legislation.
Tony, it's Mark, I have one question, so I presume the town meeting will, uh, take place sometime after this election?
Um, still before or after, either way, I mean, I, I guess I'll say that I'm pretty confident, almost a hundred percent confident, that we're going to have to postpone town meeting. Uh, it's unlikely that we're going to be able to put that many people in the room by May sixteenth. Uh, whether we postpone it to, uh, after this election or before the election or, um, beyond June thirtieth, I guess we're still waiting on some guidance from the state to, so once the legislation passes at the state and what our options are, we'll talk as a group, um, and discuss, you know, which way to go. But yeah, I, it would be, I, I would be expecting that town meeting is not going to occur on the sixteenth, but we're not prepared to take that vote tonight.
Yeah, I understand that, um, and I think, uh, probably sometime after the election, I know that, that last year that the town meeting voted to separate the two and to have the election first and town meeting second. So if we can, even if we have to postpone both, if we can follow the wishes of the town, I think that would be best.
So you would prefer to have town meeting after town elections?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Okay, as long as, honestly for me, as long as they're, uh, as long as they're separate days is really the number one priority for me, because I think if, no matter what, if we're going to do June twentieth, I'd like to do them upstairs in the main hall and spread the booths out and, and, and set up a safe polling station. So, as soon as we get some advice or some guidance from the state, we'll, uh, we'll add it to the next Board of Selectmen agenda.
Sounds good.
So that's it for discussion.
Okay, we need to vote on that?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Josh Antherm, aye?
Mark Collin, aye.
Richie Lombard, aye? Okay.
That means you get, uh, two bonus months, Richie.
Yeah, thanks, Josh.
You're gonna need that, you're gonna need that extra pay, right?
Yeah. Yeah, that extra, it's eighty-eight cents or whatever, I don't know.
Not even close to eighty-eight cents.
I don't think, I, I think I give it to charity, so I don't get anything anymore. Uh, okay, what's that?
All right, I moved that the town apply, excuse me, start again, I moved that the town apply for the title to the abandoned vessel Lady Apple Two, pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter ninety-one, section forty, for the purposes of disposal.
Is there a second?
Seconded by Josh.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion?
Tony?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you, uh, Dan, I'll let you, I'll let you, uh, tell the story on Lady Apple Two.
Uh, in late October of last year, our harbor master got a telephone call from the police department saying that there was literally a boat drifting in the, in the har, the mooring field, it turns out that after, uh, Bob rode out there to meet this fellow on, on this decrepit boat, uh, he found out that the boat had lost power as it was traveling from Boston ostensibly to Ipswich, and, uh, a fellow by the name of Frank Fornier was on that boat alone, and it was his claim that he just bought the boat for a dollar and was trying to get it home. Uh, well, as you can see, he never made it, and then he ended up mooring it to the town mooring temporarily with, with, with Bob's permission, uh, but then he came back only once to try to, to try to retrieve it, and we really haven't seen him since. Uh, in a situation like that, the state actually has a procedure by which anyone really could try to apply for title if the boat is abandoned. In this case, we, we've met the statutory prerequisite for an abandoned boat, and our primary goal is to just get it off the wharf, so the kids don't get up there and do something silly on it, and it's just out of the way. Mr. Fornier apparently has now just basically disappeared. Uh, Bob's having a really hard time getting in touch with him, so his cooperation is a bit of an issue. Uh, we are in touch with the, the environmental police, um, Officer Sweeney has been very helpful. So the next step that we think we should take is to try to get title to this boat, uh, and then, and then dispose of it, um, one way or the other, to get it off the wharf.
I spent some time talking to Rob Tibbo, our harbor master in Warvanger, uh, and once we take title, um, if we dispose of it, uh, there's a cost associated with that. So if anybody wants a free boat, as Dan just mentioned, it's decrepit, and Rob confirmed that, uh, but if you want a free boat, get in touch with Rob.
There are parts, there are parts in the boat, it has two motors and there's got to be some salvageable stuff on there, and it's a big boat, it's, I don't know, what is it? What is it, and, uh, Tony, what, twenty-eight feet or something? It's pretty good size.
Like a cabin cruiser.
Yeah, it's like a twenty-eight, thirty-foot cabin cruiser, and from the outside, it looks pretty good. Uh, Rob offered to send me some pictures to demonstrate that it is decrepit, I said, I trust your judgment, so, uh, but, um, there, you know, might be some value to somebody and, and, uh, you know, it, it will cost something to the town to get rid of it, because it has to be disposed by an approved boat disposal place and, you know, that the fuel and oil is, you know, hazardous waste, so, uh, something to think about.
Um, I'll just add that, you know, this situation isn't ideal, but it could be a lot worse. Uh, we, we decided to get the boat out of the water as soon as we possibly could. You know, the, the owner of the boat basically was non-responsible the entire time. Uh, and, you know, the last thing we wanted to do was have to pay extra money to get the boat, had it sunk, uh, in the, you know, at the mooring, out of the harbor, so it's not ideal, and, and we'll have to find out, we'll have to figure a way to pay to get, get rid of the boat, but, it's much, a better situation than it could have been.
I, I noticed in this situation, um, we didn't have much notice, he just sort of showed up and tied on to the harbor master's mooring and, and sort of vanished. Uh, but I, I, I do understand, Tony, correct me if I'm, um, but we, for anyone mooring the boat on, at the, eh, eh, in the heart, we require insurance, liability insurance?
We do, we do, it's a, it's a, hold on a second. Sorry, that ditch, ditch rock on there, um, yeah, we do, I believe so, I think part of the mooring fee, we, we require that insurance, yep.
Yeah, in the event that a boat sank or something, there was some damage, um, there was some cost in terms of cleanup, the first types of things of the mechanism for the town to, uh, seek damages.
There is, unfortunately, like you said, this is, this situation, uh, somewhat unique. Uh, this, this gentleman bought the boat for a dollar and as he was driving it out of Boston, heading up to Ipswich, lost power and, uh, floated in and out and never saw him again.
So we're, we're in the product of a current, right?
Yeah, yeah, trust me, I would, I was, I asked, I asked Rob plenty of times, like, if we could be the product of a current in the other direction. But unfortunately, it wasn't going to work.
You sure no one's living in that boat? Had the chief check that out, haven't you?
Yeah.
Okay. I can, I'm, I'm ready to vote.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye?
Josh Antherm, aye?
Mark Collin, aye.
Aye, Richie, okay. By the way, that boat, that boat had washed up, um, in Bass Point, uh, right behind Kelly Greens. And then I think, uh, the harbor master pulled it off the rocks and then brought it to the mooring out there, and then they finally, um, and, and picked it up and put it in the back of that, at the end of the boatyard there. So I, I don't know what, I'm not sure about what's the wherewithal of the boat, but.
But the meeting stuff was at the end of the.
Uh, someone just jumped on, hold on. All right, um.
Anyway, that's.
Good to vote?
All those in favor, aye? I think we did, aye?
I think we already did, but.
Oh.
We already did it.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so there, there isn't any ongoing business, uh, we meet again next week. This, as the first Thursday of April. And I don't have anything on Town Administrator Report, because, uh, you know, every day has been completely consumed by the coronavirus and yesterday we had the virtual town hall, which, except for one minor hiccup, it was, it was, I think, extremely successful. And, um, so unless, uh, Deb, do you have anything you want to add or any new, any new information to provide from yesterday?
No, nothing has, um, nothing has changed. Everything, um, going pretty well, I actually released, um, two people from quarantine today. Uh, travelers that had done their two weeks of home quarantine with no, um, complications, no symptoms, so, no, fingers crossed.
Yeah, we had a very, uh, very informative session last night, for anybody that, um, is on the phone today that wasn't yesterday, um, we got a briefing from several department heads and, um, everybody, all the town employees and volunteers really stepped up and, you know, they're doing their, all this extra work under stressful conditions, and still fulfilling the regular duties. Well, special thanks to all our town employees and you, Tony, for leading the charge and W two for, um, finding all these, these health issues, so thanks to everybody, really, it's a, been a great effort. It's, uh, encouraging to see, um, how well this community has pulled together.
Um, Tony, I, a few comments, um, I, I, I just echo, uh, Josh's, um, words. Uh, again, thank you all for every, everything that you've been doing. Uh, we couldn't have a better team in place. Uh, on a broader note, I did notice that there is a, um, there was a new light at the tower at the Coast Guard's, at the lifesaving station. Um, and I, I guess there were a few people, Ken Smith and Emily Parks and Roz and Andy Corleone, a few others, uh, from the Preservation Trustes to, um, got together and they, they lit up the, uh, the tower at the, uh, at the lifesaving station, so it's sort of a beacon, uh, for welcoming Nahatis back home at night, so I think it looks great, um, I appreciate their work. I noticed on, um, social media that it's getting a lot of good comments. So anybody wants to, um, drive by at night and look at it, I think it's, it's pretty nice and, um, the second, I, I, I do want to give a shout out to one other person, uh, Suzanne McAvilly, who's been encouraging. Uh, I didn't know, Tony, she's been in touch with you and you've been coordinated with, uh, you know, going to these, uh, virtual Town Hall types of things, so I'm glad that you were able to get this going so quickly and involve the town in our meetings the way you have. Things are working out just great, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you. Um, we do have, uh, uh, Michelle Capano, uh, Richie, Mr. Chairman, if you're okay, uh, Michelle Capano in the, uh, is in the chat asking to, um, participate in the meeting now in citizens' forum, if you're okay with that?
I'm fine, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, go ahead, Michelle.
Hey, thanks, everybody, hey, good evening, um, well, first of all, I think it's wonderful that we have this Zoom feature available, so really a great job at putting this together and the collaboration. Um, the question I had was, uh, we know that you're working very hard, the town has to operate as well as our state government has to operate, but we do have an activity going on regarding Northeastern, and they've, um, put out their final environmental impact report. The public comment period is going on right now, and it ends on April twenty-fourth. And so I was wondering if the Board of Selectmen are going to ask MIPA for an extension, given the current situation. It's a anxious time for everybody, and the current situation just puts another layer of complexity. It would be great if the state could, um, allow the, an extension in that comment period. Because Northeastern is going to work aggressively to get that certificate and move forward with their project.
Yeah, I would think that, uh, we need to request that, and it, the request, I think, would be for sixty days or for as long as the state of emergency stays in effect.
I agree.
I would agree also.
Tony, would you write that letter in behalf of the Board of Selectmen?
Abs, absolutely, and, uh, just so you, so you know.
And have Town Counsel, uh, check it, just to make sure that you're wording on that document, very important.
Yes, uh, Amy, uh, Quesel from K P Law, who has been involved in all of our comments and extension requests, uh, is already on it, um, as far as reviewing the final environmental impact report. Um, but I will, I'm happy to talk to her about, uh, a, adding in an extension request. And we can get that, I, I thought I saw something, Dan, I don't know if you saw, but I thought I saw something that came out of Environment and Energy Affairs about extension on permitting or comment.
Well, you, well, there is, there is something in the legislature now, it's that, it's that omnibus bill that's pending regarding the challenges being faced by municipalities, and it's in that bill, they're, they're just basically tolling almost everything. Um, we recently got notice from the S, uh, the Supreme Judicial Court, um, saying that everything, all statute limitations are being told for about three months, something ridiculous like that, so it'd be hard to believe that this wouldn't come within that circle of protection, but we can certainly make sure of that, um, looking at the bill.
So if it's, if it's okay with you, uh, I will also ask, um, our state electeds, Representative Capano and Senator Crichton, to sign on to those bills.
Yeah, that would be appropriate.
That sounds great, that sounds great, thanks, gentlemen, we appreciate it.
Um, I don't see any other questions in the chat, if anybody is on Zoom right now and, um, has any questions for the board, please ask in the chat.
Tony, while we're waiting on that, I did, I did have one question I, I forgot to bring up during my comments. I know we, we spoke a little bit, uh, on the phone the other day about this, and I don't expect an answer today, but, regarding construction, um, regarding sort of landscapers and those types of people working around town, um, I know the governor has, um, not made a ruling on this yet, but one of the issues, as you know, is, um, having our inspectors going into homes, inspecting for electrical, plumbing, uh, building permits and those types of things. So I think it's something, at least on my radar screen, I'm sure that you're looking into it, um, and you advise the board, uh, what you think we should do at some, some future point, but, um, I think it's, uh, it's an important issue.
Yeah, uh, right now, my instruction to the building inspector, uh, all of the inspectors actually, is that they only conduct inspections either virtually or by photo documentation, basically don't go in the house. We are currently, we're still accepting, uh, applications which are submitted online. We've, Dan and I and, uh, Jeff Blake and I have had a lot of. We've, Dan and I and Jeff Blake and I have had a lot, a couple of conversations about, about construction, uh, in general. We have, you know, the construction at the library started. We still have residential construction going on, so. It's something that we're definitely keeping an eye on right now. I'm happy to have that discussion as we get, we're, we're, it was really strange, you know, the governor, the governor was, um, was, was allowing construction to continue, and the guidance that we were getting from the state was to, to let it happen, let it continue. But then he kind of went in the other direction with Boston, and it sent a mixed signal to all the municipalities, so. I know that the, I know that the governor's office is working on something, uh, currently, and KP Law is very well tied into that. So, uh, we will, we'll keep an eye on it and we'll have a discussion as soon as we get more guidance. Dan, do you wanna add anything to that?
Yeah, the, you know, Nantucket, all, uh, six municipalities in the Vineyard, Somerville, they've all taken this no construction sort of stance. Um, and it's really come down to the ability for the town or city to monitor what's happening on these sites. In addition to that, it's also come down to the idea that the hospitals that are servicing these areas can be overrun. So, uh, if the Board of Health or the health agent or the health nurse, uh, Deb comes up to the point where they think that this is just plain unhealthy, the Board of Health has the power to shut them down right then and there. That, that's clear. Using some discretion in making that happen. So you, you do have the power. It's not unprecedented. Waymouth um, has, has ordered to only mandatory inspections, and I've also heard, as, as, as Tony mentioned, these virtual inspections where people literally walk around with their cell phone and show off, um, fire alarms and whatnot.
Okay, I, I guess I'll just say, I'll, I'll wait, um, wait to hear from the, uh, the town's, um, public health professionals about this and Tony, and I'm sure it'll be on the, um, on the agenda as we move forward.
Uh, on a related note, the National Grid effort along Willow Road, that's, that's closed indefinitely, or is that right?
I know Zach told them to stop working, and then on, uh, yesterday, they, they'd been out there again. Uh, so there must have been some miscommunication. He was following up with them on that. I'm sorry, guys. I, Zach was gonna follow up with, uh, Faith. Zach was gonna follow up with Faith at National Grid to see what their, what their plan was. I know he's concerned about, you know, given that DPW's on a skeleton crew, and Grenice, um, who we usually call him for emergency breaks, is also on a skeleton crew. So we're, we're trying to be as, you know, we wanna get that work done, but we also don't wanna risk a potential break again. So I know he was following up with them because the understanding was that they were gonna stop, but they were out there yesterday, so we'll see. Um, there's, uh, Michelle also had a question about the Jasmine Nursing Home, and if there was any update regarding the residents' wellbeing there. Deb, do you wanna take that?
Um, well, all I can say about that is I did have a conversation with the administrator. It was a couple of weeks ago, though, when they were putting those new rules into effect for no visitors. But, and then I, the week following it, I had a discussion with the nursing director, but I have had no, uh, no information to think that there's anything going on there that would be alarming or, um, you know, and there's nothing positive going in there. I, I haven't heard of anything, to tell you the truth, so. They know, they have my information, and they know how to contact me if they need to.
Okay. And another question that came in was about landscapers, um, whether they can, whether they are allowed to work or not. Under the governor's executive order or emergency order, landscaping was determined as an essential business, and it's allowed to continue. Uh, so as of right now, there's no, there's no restriction on landscapers. I guess the other update is today, the, the governor did announce, uh, that starting tomorrow, all coastal reservations, our parking lots are gonna be closed. So tomorrow at noon, I think, uh, the parking lot along the Causeway will close. Um, he didn't have a, an end date on that. Uh, along with, uh, the parking along Lynchwood Drive will be coned off. Uh, again, it's an effort to try to encourage social distancing and minimal numbers, uh, on public property. It included in that was, uh, the language he used was, I think, uh, transient activity, like biking and walking and jogging, uh, you know, on the beaches. So similar to what we've done in the town of Hott with our open spaces, uh, we've uh, allowed for passive recreation only. Uh, so we're in line with the governor on that.
And, uh, Tony, you might wanna mention too that Dunkin' Donuts closed today.
Yes, Dunkin' Donuts is closed. Uh, they are reevaluating whether or not they're gonna open up again. Um, I know that, uh, they can be open for takeout, um, but the, the gentleman there, the owner of the business is gonna shut down for now and make a decision later on as to whether he'll open back up for takeout. So we're down to, uh, I think Seaside Variety and Seaside Pizza is our, is basically our only food options in town, other than Council on Aging, which is doing a good job. We've had to cap it at 25. There's a lot of people that would love to get in on, on the, on the lunch service there. Uh, it's a great deal. Um, but you guys got an update on that yesterday. Uh, we are, uh, we have four different chefs that come in once a week, Monday through Thursday, and then we have Linda and Ann Callahan working in the, in the Tiffany Room to, with the chef to, to package and bag all those lunches. And then we have four different, um, volunteer deliveries, delivery people that each have picked a day, and then they do the deliveries Monday through, through Thursday. And then on Friday, uh, Captain's is offering, uh, free, free, uh, service to seniors. Jen, great point. Uh, yesterday, I mentioned on the, on the, uh, on the, on the virtual town hall was, uh, Tony Parentazzi mentioned, uh, Anchor.
Food pantry.
Food pantry, Anchor Food Pantry. And, and, and I believe, I, you know, I don't know if that's been posted on, on covid19.com yet. Uh, if it hasn't, I'll make sure it is tomorrow, but, uh, folks can also, uh, are gonna be able to get, uh, school lunches and, um, and all the information will be on our website.
Right.
That's it.
You know, you know what that means? Bedtime for Lotto.
Yeah, glass of wine for Tony.
I, 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 I moved to adjourn.
Motion to move to adjourn is a second.
Seconded.
Motion made, discussion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Josh, a for my.
My, Tony, and I.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. Have a great weekend. We'll talk to you next week.
All right, stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Bye-bye.